Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. Our school board is now in session. It looks great to see all these people out here today come out to see us and seeing students as well. Thank you for being here. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Moment of Silence. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into our Moment of Silence, just a point of order. As you know, we lost two of our great students on Friday. Kisa Wilson, who was an eighth grader at Roseberry Middle School, and also Haley Patterson, a 12th grade grader at Andrews High School. So in this Moment of Silence, I want you to take the time to remember this, the family and the friends, siblings of these two families. Let us go into prayer. You may be seated. First thing on the agenda is calling Dr. Vereen, the recognition of our 2024 Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School FFA. Thank you, Dr. Vereen.
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Gaskins, members of the Board, Dr. Giles, district staff, and guests. This afternoon, I have the honor and privilege of recognizing the FFA chapter from Carvers Bay Early College and Career High School. FFA is an extracurricular student organization for those interested in agriculture and leadership. It is one of the three components of agricultural education, and the organization as a whole is committed to providing students with a path to achievement in premier leadership, personal growth, and career success. Under the guidance of Advisor Garrett Howard, Carvers Bay's FFA students excelled during the 2023-24 school year, and I'm excited to share those accomplishments with you. Please note that I will call the FFA students forward after the chapter's accomplishments have been shared. During the State FFA Leadership Camp, Carvers Bay Early College and Career High received the Chapter of the Week Award, and Jennings A. Vant was recognized as one of the top five campers. While at the State FFA Convention, Carvers Bay was recognized in the top 10 for its Green Hand Knowledge Team, which included Crystal West, Bryant Garman, Carson Lewis, Leah Benton. Marissa Jones was recognized in the top 10 in the Ag Ed Contest, and Jenna K. Avent was recognized in the top 5 in the Employment Skills Contest. The Agroscience Fair state winners and national qualifiers were Jaylee Barnhill and Marissa Jones. Jennings Avent was elected to a State FFA office. Jenna K. Avent was elected as the Commissioner of Agriculture at Palmetto Girl State. Hallie Baxley was selected to participate in the South Carolina Governor's School for Agricultural Camp, and Marissa Jones was selected to the South Carolina Commissioner's School for Agriculture, where she was recognized in the top 6 for public speaking. Additionally, and very important to note, is that Carvers Bay FFA chapter moved its rating up from being a superior chapter to a National Bronze Emblem chapter during that 23-24 school year. So at this time, I would like to invite our Board members and the administration from Carvers Bay Early High
I'm sorry.
...to come forward to assist. Again, the Board members and the administration from Carvers Bay Early High School to come forward to assist with the recognition of these members of the FFA chapter. The chapter members being recognized this afternoon are Advisor Garrett Howard, Jenna K. Avent, Haley Barnhill, and Hallie Baxley. Please join me once again in congratulating Carvers Bay Early College and Career High Schools' FFA chapter.
One, two, three. Again, on three. One, two, three. Thank you and congratulations.
The Board would like to do our own special recognition to somebody that's very special to all of us, who takes care of us all the time. Ms. Amanda, would you come on down? Yep. We appreciate all that you do for us, the schedules, taking care of us, the phone calls. We appreciate you from all of us, yes. Okay, the first thing on our agenda is calling Ms. Thompson up. Ms. Lyndsey Thompson is our district attorney, and she's going to discuss with us some guidelines regarding public comments.
Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, members of the Board, Dr. Giles. We realized that after you all passed your revisions to the public comment policy, we failed to do our due diligence as educators in the room. Most of us sitting in here at some point have served as a teacher, and we somehow didn't think to share with the public what the actual expectations were for what the new public comment rules actually meant in practice. So we decided that it might be helpful here at the beginning of a school year to go back and talk about the do's and the don'ts of public comments, to make sure that what we have put in kind of a policy is also being understood and used in practice. So I've broken down what you all have in the, what's always listed in the Board agenda, but just to make certain, because sometimes those words can tend to get lost, but the first section there says that the public comment period of every Board meeting is reserved for comments from the audience on any item appearing on the agenda, for citizens to make specific requests of the school district, or to raise specific issues for future discussion by the Board. So those are the first two guiding points there, to make requests of the school district or to bring up topics for future discussion. Also, you all did require, and most districts do require this, that persons who wish to address the Board have to complete one of the public comment cards that's available at the entrance and submit it before the meeting begins. And that's for record-keeping purposes, so that if you all aren't able to respond to an individual, as our policy states that you don't typically respond to someone, that you can delegate one of the district office staff members to respond directly to that person, who might have better knowledge and better ability to guide that person through a better answer. So we do need that for record-keeping purposes. The next part is that public comments will be aired live, so that is a change from our former practice. We used to cut off the broadcast during public comments, but we have chosen not to do that now that we're living in more of a digital age. And I'll tell you the reason why we used to cut it off was to alleviate any kind of exacerbated concerns regarding potential slander claims. So if an individual were to come up here and to slander an individual person, administrator, student, whatever it is, if we were not airing that live, we had a little bit less liability in terms of slander. But in the digital age, we felt like the public has a more, there are more people watching online or on TV than there used to be, and that it was more important to go ahead and share those comments, that the benefits outweighed the risks there. And then, of course, that last statement, the Board will not typically respond to individual comments, and that is certainly to make sure that we're keeping everyone on track, so that the meetings are not becoming an adversarial back-and-forth, or so that we're simply not bogged down with one particular issue for an extended period of time. And again, in your new comment policy, you included that the public comment period is limited to 30 minutes overall, and that each, that was a new limit that you placed on the policy, that the whole comment period would last 30 minutes generally, but that individual comments should not exceed three minutes, and that has been the case for quite some time, the three-minute limit there. The next section is that speakers may offer constructive criticism of school operations and programs. And that, again, school operations and programs, broad concepts, broad brushstrokes, not specific individuals, specific students, specific staff, and that's what's listed in the next line. The Board will not hear complaints about specific school personnel or students. And again, that's in an effort to protect everyone's privacy, under various federal laws protecting student privacy, employee privacy, and then, of course, any concerns regarding slander or libel that we would not want to open either the speaker up to or the school district as a whole. The next part is what you should do if you have comments about specific school personnel or students, those complaints should be brought to the appropriate supervisory personnel or to Board members privately. And again, those are, it's much more effective and efficient to speak to, directly to your school board member or directly to a staff member who could assist with resolving a matter rather than sharing it with the entire Board. It's usually more expeditious and more efficient to share with a Board member privately or a staff member. And then, of course, the last statement, persons commenting and members of the audience must remain civil and respectful at all times, and anyone violating those rules may be asked to leave the meeting. And that is, of course, standard for most public bodies, that there is a level of decorum and civility required, and that people who are violating the rules and warned may eventually be asked to leave. Okay. So we put in here just some very broad brushstroke examples, and the first one would be, so let's pretend that we are a public commenter, and the person says, "I'm here tonight to speak to the Board about its budgetary priorities. The county's spending too much money on athletics and not on the fine arts. We have new stadiums, new athletic uniforms, and newly paved parking lots around all of our fields, but we haven't gotten new band instruments in five years." All of this, again, is hypothetical, pretend examples. "Our auditoriums have poor lighting and sound systems, and we desperately need more costumes for our plays and performances. Please consider decreasing funding for sports and increasing funding for arts when you create the next budget." That would be a perfectly acceptable public comment. It does offer criticism, but it offers constructive criticism. It doesn't mention any specific names or program or students, excuse me, any specific names of students or staff. It talks about overall programmatic issues, budgetary issues, that sort of thing that are within the Board's purview. The next example would be, again, completely made up. Example two, I need to bring, this is again a public speaker, "I need to bring to your attention the conduct of the principal at X High School. He's been yelling at students and berating teachers in the cafeteria every day, and he personally told my son that he was an idiot. This is the worst principal that has ever led X High School, and he needs to be fired immediately." Okay? That comment would violate Board policy. The speaker doesn't ever give the name of the principal, but we certainly are able to easily identify when you say the principal of this school. It's easy to identify who the speaker is referencing, and that works in just the same way as if you had named the person directly. And again, a better course of action would be for the speaker to request a meeting with the principal supervisor, or to call or email the Board member responsible for that area or their elected member privately. Okay? And then the final example, it would be another pretend person speaking, saying, "My daughter has been bullied at Y Elementary for the past six months by four other third-grade girls. The other girls all live on our street, and they pick on my daughter constantly. I've reported this to my daughter's teacher, but she has not done anything to correct the situation, and now I hear these girls are harassing other students in the school too. The mother of one of these girls is the president of the PTO, and that's why, and I know that's why the principal isn't taking any action. I demand that you, as the Board, take care of this bullying immediately." Again, that comment would violate the Board policy, even though you're not mentioning names, you're narrowing the group down small enough so that we could identify who those children are, potentially who the teacher is, and in doing that, you are, again, essentially naming the person. Again, the best course of action would be to speak to the principal again, the principal supervisor, or another member of the district office staff, or a Board member to address those concerns directly. So those are just some broad brushstroke examples of what to do and not to do in public comment, so that the expectations are clear. Mr. Walker.
Yes. Since this is the first time we're presenting this, and we may never see this group of people again, do we plan to make sure everybody gets this when it comes to the next meeting, or will we have some literature at the door? Because we don't want to single out who we tell this to. We want to make sure everybody knows.
Right, absolutely. This is just the first opportunity that we've had to do it.
Okay.
I think it may be a good idea to have a, to keep this literature perhaps on the website. I'm not sure the best way to go out sharing it with the public, but I think you make a valid point, that this is a limited portion of the population, and we can look at ways to make that information available to people who aren't sitting here.
Just want to make sure we make everybody aware.
Absolutely. I think that's a great point.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And now we come into public comments, and just to reiterate some of the things that you covered, that public comments are limited to 30 minutes, comments or requests should be brief and to the point as possible and shall not exceed three minutes. Speakers may offer constructive criticism of school operations and programs. However, the Board will not hear complaints about school personnel or students. Those complaints should be brought to the appropriate supervisory personnel or Board members privately. Further, persons commenting and members of the audience must remain civil and respectful at all times. Anyone violating these guidelines may be asked to leave the meeting. So this evening, we have three speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Neal.
Good evening.
I am speaking on behalf of the Plannersville School closure potential. The Georgetown County School District has been under a consent decree stemming from court order that the segregation in the 1970s. The decree was signed in 1997 after the Department of Justice stated that the district had failed to abide by the terms of earlier court orders. The Board entered into a consent agreement with the United States Department of Justice, which stated the attendance zone is inflexible and must be enforced for attendance purposes. All administrators are charged with the responsibility of reporting any zone violation which they have observed. In 2023-2024 school year, 54 years later, the U.S. Department of Education awarded $14.9 million to start a magnet program for Carvers Bay feeder-school areas, which included Pleasant Hill Elementary, Carvers Bay High School, Middle Brown's Ferry Elementary, and Plannersville Elementary. Plannersville is a Title I school, which have made significant improvement over the past three years in comparisons to pertaining elementary schools in the Carvers Bay area. Statistics received from the school district is in reference to enrollment as such. As 2022 through 2023, Brown's Ferry Elementary went from 128 to 1, from 124 to 128, which is a plus 4 in students enrollment. Pleasant Hill Elementary School went from 278 to 266, which is a minus 12 in student enrollment. Plannersville Elementary School went from 59 to 73%. As of today, 81%, which is a 22, a plus 22 student enrollment overall, and a plus 15 in Magnet. The question remains, what are you looking for, and you, and have you, the administrator and Board members, applied all of the resources available, and have you applied all the academic personnel support available to make the school successful as it relates to Magnet? Can you provide the data after this meeting? I recall during October 23, 2023 Board meeting, the Magnet School were underspent in excess of $1 million. You, the Board, should be asked in question, why is this resort, why was resources withheld who have the oversight, and how did this impact our students? This school have made significant improvement from 2022 to 2024. If you look back one year earlier, Plannersville Elementary School went from 59 to 81 students enrollment, which is a 20, a plus 22. What is your motive and justification? We must give Magnet Program the opportunity to work as it has for our children of Plannersville. You are not losing money to keep Plannersville open when you create positions in the district within itself. Chief Operation Office, Magnet Assistant Director, with an excess of $100,000
Mr. Neal, your time's just about up.
Who have oversight of the, who have oversight of the Magnet money. Thank you for those of you who support the children of Plannersville Elementary School, and those that don't, shame on you. Election does have consequences, but our children should not bear the burden. Thank you. God bless you all.
Our next speaker is Mr. Randy Ford.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My comment is a follow-up from Mr. Neal, and that is, based on data, the increase of student at Plannersville School is 15 from last year. Now, there are three questions that I have, and the three questions are, have you contacted Department of Education for school closing Plannersville School? First question. The second question, if you have not, when do you plan to contact them? And the third, what are your intentions as far as Plannersville School in contacting the Department of Education based on the funding that were awarded to the school? And what are the terms of the grant that was granted for the school?
Mr. Ford, with the Magnet grant, so it is a five-year grant, and with the terms of the Magnet grant, there is a specific amount of the budget that is designated for Plannersville Elementary School or Plannersville Digital Immersion School. We have contacted the Magnet Department or the federal Magnet Department, and they have given us direction as to what would happen if it were passed for the closing of the school. So we have been given guidance for where the funding would go and what next steps would be.
Well, my question is, will you allow the five years before you make a decision, based on what we have here?
That will depend on the Board, the Board's decision, and we'll discuss this further in our information item in number one this evening.
So I want to make sure that I understand you clearly. So the Justice Department will make a decision based on what you, what this Board term, will they respond to the community?
I, I don't have an answer for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Cooper.
Hello, everyone. Hi. I am just here because I wanted to make a few statements. The first being, I know that you're searching for the superintendent. While many of us believe there's no need to search, I want to first point out that there was an injury done by first not hiring in-house from our staff, our pool, of very dedicated, very educated, very qualified personnel who were already staffed at the district. That was the injury. The insult was to not only not hire, but to bring in someone and not even consider the community input on that decision. While you did include the community input on this decision, you didn't hear us, because we clearly stated who we wanted, and we clearly stated to you that there was no need to search. While I understand you have to do what you have to do, I need you to also understand your job is to do what's best for our children and our communities, not just for you to make the decision that is presented, but for you to live in these communities and live with that decision, because we too have to live with that decision. So make the right decision. Don't add another insult to the first injury. Make the right decision and make sure that it is Dr. Giles. Secondly, I wanted to make sure that the Plannersville School, this Board, or some of the members, not all of you, came to each and every one of those five Magnet schools. You paraded their principals in front of us, and you asked us to buy in to this Magnet program. You assured us that you were going to invest resources in those five schools to make them successful. Plannersville is one of those schools. They deserve the same resources that you promised. They deserve the effort you promised when you wrote the grant. You knew the school was underperforming, and I want to know, if you knew that, why didn't you just write them out of the grant altogether? Why did you let them go through this process? Give them this hope, only to diminish that light and tell them that you're going to make the decision based on whatever? That's not fair. They're citizens. Their children go to school here. That's a community school, and that's what you promised. And now you're going back on your promise because it doesn't facilitate your financial liability? You knew that prior to the grant. You knew that prior to your promise. I want to see men and women of integrity on this Board, not men and women who do whatever it takes to go home and get out of here, because you don't want to hear our mouths. You live with us, you see us, and we will see you. Make sure that you live by your word. Don't turn your backs on us.
The next thing on the agenda is approval of our minutes. We have, you've received July 11, 2024, and July 16, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
It's been moved, and it's been second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The minutes have been approved. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The agenda has been adopted. The first item is actually talking about Plannersville Immersion School. This, this is a discussion that we don't like to have about closing a school. This is a discussion that we don't like to have about closing a school. And our biggest concern is the state of our financial finances as we come into end of next budget year. This budget year, we had, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Lisa, we had a little bit over $2 billion in mandates from the state. And we had, we borrowed $2 million out of our balance fund. In addition, we had over another $2 or $3 million that we put into employee benefits. And also, one of the things that all the schools wanted was to hire and have an interventionist. So we were able to put that in place. Our concern as we go into, and we had to raise taxes the last three years, we have raised taxes. This past year, we $0.9 million, and we can't continue to raise taxes to meet our needs. So we, because in the future, we're going to have to really take a look at, do we increase class sizes? Do we get rid of the interventionists that all the schools want to have, that they need? Those are some of the questions this board, in May of next year, are going to have to answer. So what we've done is we've taken a look at the possible impact of closing Plantersville Digital Immersion Schools. And we are spending close to $31,000 on every child that we're educating out there, where the district average is around $14,000 per child. But the average is always based on the size of the school. And this is impacting our taxpayers in Georgetown County. The other areas we've, very slim, that we could save in closing is about $1.3 million in closing. And also, we know that there are pending facility upgrades that are needed in that, like putting on new roof, new HVA systems, and also, it is an aging building. And one of the things that the data that was shared with me was with age of the facility and the number of work orders have increased there as well. And by moving, by closing, we'll be able to lower the cost per pupil as they go to other schools in the district, any of our other Magnet schools in the area. And we know that we'll be able to continue the money for those students go, the money from the grant will follow them if they go into one of our Magnet schools. And also with staffing, we'll be able to keep the majority of the staff in the Carvers Bay area. And on the next slide, we looked at positive student impacts in making this happen. We can increase student opportunities for students in academic teams, clubs, chorus, GT classes. We can increase the number of peers that our students would have in their classrooms, be more access to guidance counselor, media center, special area opportunities that they would have that we can't provide in a small school. And also, we'll have the ability to get a true measure of the overall student academic success of our students. And for our teachers, we could afford teacher planning with their peers per grade level. And we'll have the ability to blend Magnet strategies, Avid, and technology.
I think as we actually look at it, and we're not just talking dollars, we're talking that students would still have the same or better opportunities in their groups. Right now, the same students start school most of the time in pre-K and matriculate through fifth grade, kind of like a family does with the siblings in a family. And so, the inner actions with other peers when they would be in another larger classroom. And if we were to provide teachers in the setting they are now, there would have to be multi-level classrooms in order for us to meet the demand of the number of students to the teacher. Otherwise, we're totally out of balance in what we can provide to all children in Georgetown County. And it isn't that we don't want Plantersville students to get those opportunities, but we want all students to get those opportunities. Example, interventionists. At Plantersville, if you have an interventionist, you only have a small number of students that might need that intervention, but you still have an interventionist. And if we have other schools that are very large, and they have a large number of students that need the interventionist, they still only have one interventionist. So it's very, very hard to keep raising taxes and not be able to provide for all of our students in the district. That's a huge part. The second huge part that you mentioned, Mr. Gaskins, is teacher planning. A teacher in isolation doing a grade level only has the knowledge of that teacher on that grade level. And in another setting, that teacher's going to have some peers. So they're going to be able to work together to come up with a lot of different strategies to help the children in the classroom. So they're going to get the help not only of each other and planning those strategies and working together, but they're going to offer a plethora of ideas that are going to reach all of our children, children at Plantersville and all children in a variety of ways. I think those are huge perks. GT, I'm going to speak to GT. If you only have two or three students in GT, they don't feed off each other or have as often the opportunities to work together and to be with other peers that have those same interests, just like the intervention, children that need intervention or children that need to be pushed on the other side, they need that push too with a variety of children. They'll be more ready for middle school if we put them together than they are in a very small group. Those are some of the things we've thought about, not just dollars and cents, but what it's going to impact all of the students. I'd just like to share that because that's a real concern.
That is really important because it's not just about money, it's about what the best for all students. But looking ahead, if we do make this move, looking ahead, you know, we would have discussions about repurposing the building with the district and community input, transportation study, reaching out to the Justice Department, notifying the State Department of Education in South Carolina. So I know that since 2022, this has come up several times, but we've never taken any action on it. And I do know what the school means to you. We do recognize that. It breaks my heart.
If I may. First of all, I want to say to our babies that go to Plantersville Elementary School, we commend them on the growth. That's not the question. I came out to Plantersville School for the back-to-school fund that you had, and I told you, our baby gave me an argument to argue here are legs to stand on because their growth has been tremendous there. I want to first let you know that I recognize that. The second thing is, and this is where I group one of the speakers, when I first got on board, this was a conversation. And I went to some of the community members, and they understood some of the concerns. The problem that I think a lot of them have now is that we came out and we did make those promises about the Magnet program, and now you're saying, oh, we're going to potentially take that away and give you some more promises. You get tired of hearing the crying wolf. And that's the problem that they're having. I think everybody wants better for our kids because it's not just yours, they're mine, they're ours as well. But I think that's the problem that we're having. I don't know that we can offer any certainty, but certainly, they want certainty because broken promises in the past.
Right.
And I don't know if you agree with me totally, but like I said, I can't argue with what we're seeing that will be good for our kids. Can't. I'd be a fool to argue against that because it's just the broken promises in the past that have most of them concerned.
And I do understand that. I want to share, I do understand that. I understand where we're coming from, but just like we just now said, the money, the Magnet programs and the money will follow the children wherever they actually then are zoned or choose to go. Because Magnet programs are a choice. I think we need to know that Magnet programs are a choice. And so, the parents would still have the same choice of going to a Magnet program, not just where you were zoned, but a choice to go to a Magnet program where the opportunities and the dollars would follow.
Yeah. And I'd just like to say that one of my concerns when we were talking about this was the impact it potentially could have on the people who are employed there that have been invested in their jobs. And I was really happy to hear that almost everyone will be able to keep their job. And that, to me, was very good news.
And again, that's what I still do have a concern about because I'm hearing almost and everyone needs to keep their job.
My concern is, when you presented this Magnet School to us, I think some of us had our doubts, but we went forward with it. And we were told we were committed for five years. And I think what the people at Plantersville want to see is us hold true to that, and then maybe we can go, you know, in another direction.
Just that we have, there are a lot of resources that are being put into, we have to look at the resources that are being put into the schools. And we want to make sure that what we're doing is best for the children and for all the children. So we want to make sure that the children at Plantersville, that we're giving them a fair assessment of their abilities. And we haven't been able to do that when we look at the test scores and the averages because the pool is too small to look at year to year in terms of test results. So we want to make sure that we're giving them the best opportunity and that we're putting resources and funding where it needs to go. I mean, we have an obligation. We have an obligation to be the best stewards of dollars and cents. And it doesn't, we don't like for it to come down to dollars and cents, but the dollars and cents are what's taking care of the children. And we want to make sure that we're doing what's right for our students. So we're going to explore every avenue, and we have been doing that. And unfortunately, these are tough decisions, but we're not making them lightly. And as we go through the process of, you know, weighing the pros and cons, we have to consider all aspects.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I've got just a quick comment. I think everything we're talking about is very preliminary in making a decision. And it would be my point to make that, at the end of the day, if what we do, we need to focus on how it's going to benefit the child. And until we're all convinced of that, and when I say us, all of us, we're all part of Georgetown County, is this board's got to be sold out. Every board member's got to be sold out. This is a positive move. This community's got to be sold out and educated that this is a positive move. Because at the end of the day, like Lynn said, if it benefits the child, I don't think these folks are going to have a problem. But we got to look at every avenue before we close this school, that it is going to benefit this child in the long run.
All right. Thank you. Moving on with our agenda, Dr. Bearnaud, test results, state assessment results.
Good evening, Chairman Gaskins, Interim Superintendent Giles, Board Members, and Audience. I'll be presenting a brief overview of Spring 2024 data that has been publicly released from the state. In this brief presentation, I'll be presenting SC Ready, EOC, and the WIN Career Readiness Our first review will be SC Ready ELA Math for grades three through eight. Please note that South Carolina no longer requires testing for social studies in third through eighth grade, and that Spring 2024 was a field test year for science, third through eighth, where typical data scores are not received due to it being a field test. This shows you our overall results as a district. As you know, our goal is to grow the green, grades, expectation, and engagement. And you can definitely see that in Spring 24, we had lots of growth and lots of green for ELA and middle school. This shows you the changes from '23 as well as our pre-pandemic 2019 school year. So this shows you that we are actually on the road to recovery. We have recovered. We do have some growth to continue with in our middle school math in regards to where we were in 2019. But I am excited to state that we have the highest number of students who have scored at the met or exceeded expectations, indicating that our efforts to address those pandemic-related learning loss is proving effective. This is your ELA broken down by the different levels of not met in red, approaching in yellow, exceeds in the light, meets in the light green, and exceeds in the brighter green. The arrows give you the total. The top number would be your proficiency rate, and then your bottom would be that approaching and above, which we also look at. As a note, five schools in the district as a whole improved their scores compared to 2023. Additionally, six schools in the district's overall exceeded their performance all four years, including pre-pandemic 2019, which reflects a consistent upward trend in student achievement across our multiple years.
Excuse me, Dr. Bearnaud.
Yes.
I'm a little confused. Can you share again what the numbers in the blocks are, like 40.28 and 70?
Okay. So each year, it has the four blocks. I mean, you start 2019 to 2024. If you look at 2024, the red shows you that we had 26.6 not met. And then going up, the white box shows you that combined total. So 46.8% are our students at proficiency.
Gotcha.
Compared to 44.8 in '23. And then the 73.2 is approaching and above, so one grade level below and above.
Okay.
Which we, which shows you that we have moved our students from the not met level up.
Right.
And it's actually a perfect indicator of what you want to see from a left-to-right data presentation because you have decreased your red and yellows and increased your greens.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome.
This is our math. Overall, again, our proficiency level increased from '23. We were 32.5 in '23, and we have moved to 36.9 in 2024. Not quite where we were in 2019, but we have made more strides towards those percentages. When we looked overall at the data, we found through looking and diving into each individual strand, there are 11 strands or standards that are measured on SC Ready ELA, six on math. six on math. When we looked at those and we looked at who, the number of not met, these were our areas of most need. And if you see that writing overall was in each grade level. So we definitely know and we've already started those conversations of our plan of action for writing across the grade levels and across the curriculum. You see two for reading or ELA and two for math. That gives you the number one overall need and then that second one. And these are your lowest, these would have been the levels that had the most not mets or not mets and approaching. Our next data will be our EOCs. This again is overall, we would, for Algebra, you see Algebra I has recovered tremendously from 2019. And even from '23, we were almost at 13% increase. English II and Biology I had slight increases from '23. We still have work to do in the recovery efforts from 2019. We would like to note that U.S. History went through a field test in 2023. So that 2024 test was slightly different in regards to the questions that were provided or given. This is similar to what I provided for ELA and Math, SC Ready. This shows you your passing rate and your proficiency rate. And these are your F, Ds, Cs, Bs, and As. For proficiency for the state, you have to have a C or better. Passing is your Ds or better. We are excited to say that our Algebra I passing rate surpassed the state's by 12.35%. Our passing rate was 62.35, which was almost a 10% increase over '23 and almost a 10% increase over 2019. Our proficiency rate is right at 40%, which is a tremendous growth from 2023 as well as our other years, including 2019. I would also like to point out this actual passing rate of 62.35 is higher than our district strategic goal. We actually surpassed our strategic goal by 11.37% for Algebra I. English II, English II, we actually surpassed the state's passing rate by 9.91%, almost 10%. Our passing rate for '24 is 79.91. Our proficiency rate is 59.4. So we did increase from 2023. And in regards to our strategic goal, we surpassed that goal we set for 2024 by 4.8%. U.S. History, we surpassed the state's passing rate by 13.4%. And as you can see, I provided you with that overall passing rate and the proficiency rate. Not quite where we wanted to be compared to '23, but we know that, again, that is a somewhat different version from the tests we're comparing to in the other years. Biology, our passing rate did increase by a slight margin from 2023. We didn't quite make an increase on our proficiency rate in biology. The next slide is going to provide you with our areas to grow on. We were not provided with Biology I strands. I'm not sure exactly why it may have tied into the field test for SC Ready. Our other areas, we were able to vent to, and these were the ones that had the most levels of not met. And I would like to state that if you look at Algebra I, that numbers and quantity, that ties right into our third through eighth grade number system as well as our base 10. Our overall WIN Career Readiness Assessment, I would like to make sure you are aware, this only is for the WIN assessment. It does not show or reflect our overall career readiness. It is just for this one assessment. And again, this shows you the different levels. In prior years, you had to have a Level Four of higher or a silver or higher to be considered certified for the state. When WIN came, or when WIN was adopted, it moved to a Level Three and above, which would be your yellow and higher. Just a minute. 49.9% were awarded a Career Readiness Certificate, which is a slight decrease of 2.3 from our 2023. And this was an area we did not meet our strategic goal in. Just again, for the WIN career assessment. These are our scores for WIN by school. Your green indicates they increased from '23. Your blue is a decrease from '23. Your no credentials, you want to see the blue. The blue shows you that we've moved students to the credentialed side. Because your Level One, you don't receive a certification for Level One. What I have provided you here is links to the full data presentation that provides you information of breakdowns by the schools, the grade levels, and the subgroups. In addition, the link to the assessment summary gives you a narrative summary of our recovery progress from 2019. And we have also went through to provide you with some separate overview statements. It provides you just a short overview of our positive strides towards growing the green for all students to be successful in their chosen pathway. The notable increases that we've stated among our students receiving special services and our various subgroups highlight the effectiveness of the district's initiatives or strategies aimed at supporting these groups as well as all subgroups. Such progress is a positive indicator of the efforts toward equity and inclusivity in our educational services provided for all students as they work towards success in their chosen pathway. These statistics also suggest a general upward twin trend in EOC scores as well as SC Ready scores, with significant improvement from 2019 and continued progress in most recent year. Any questions?
I would just like to commend everyone who made this happen with our students, our teachers, our principals, our district-level folks, our superintendent. Good work.
Yes, we have lots of green and lots of celebrations.
Absolutely.
I got a question.
Yes.
Since reading this data from day one I was on the board, I've always been really confused about that yellow block. Let me tell you, that yellow block has always just made me wonder, which way do those kids go? Do they go up or do they go down? The state, and I guess our county uses the word approaching. Okay, approaching means they might get there, they may not get there. The yellow block makes everybody look really good, including our district, because that number is added into the top two blocks, correct?
Yes.
I just think we're losing and fooling ourselves to think that all these kids are going to go down to the, down to the red or up to the higher meeting. How many of these kids actually make it to the light green, green box? How many do we usually lose? And why was there ever a block ever put as said approaching? Because according to what I'm reading, approaching could be a 60. And when I was in school, 60 didn't pass. Neither did 69. So if approaching is 60 to 69, they're either almost failing or almost passing. Can you explain that, please?
So I can tell you that the state has made great strides in the revisions that has made to the report card in looking more at growth. We actually have target scores now. So when those kids that are in that approaching, we can actually see where they have moved. Excuse me. And we do have kids that move from approaching. They may fall back to the red. But we actually have kids who move all the way to the high green. And we look at that in our different meetings. But we do now have target scores that we know exactly where the kid or where the student was and where they moved to along that continuum. So that we know where those approaching kids have went to.
Just to add one more thing to Dr. Bearnaud, her point, and to kind of address that yellow block, it's important also to know that those in the red or those that weren't necessarily in the approaching, some of that yellow is increasing because we're even moving the red forward. So much of our remediation efforts and the efforts that you all as a board have supported by providing us with interventionists as well as our BHS counselors and services to address students who are in the yellow, those students that are not quite there, the efforts you are putting towards budgetary resources enforces that effort to not only address those that are behind, but those that are almost making it. And thankfully, our teachers are doing a great job with those that are almost making it so that they can make it. So we're delighted to see those students that are in the green. But you know, we're also delighted to see that the red overall is decreasing so that we can move our students overall. But please know that we are addressing those students in the yellow.
Just want to make sure that eventually the red is lower than the green. That's our goal.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Almost, is my understanding correct that almost there means they're one to two levels, grade levels behind of where they should be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's typically what we deem as approaching.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Bearnaud.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is Lisa Johnson, Building Program Funding Report.
Chairman Gaskins, board members, Dr. Giles. Tonight, we have Mr. Bob Damrin, our financial advisor with Compass Municipal Advisors LLC, and Ms. Franny Heiser, our bond attorney with Byrne Forman LLP, here to review the district's building program or capital projects funding program with you all tonight for '24, '25. We'll all be available to answer your questions after they do their presentation.
Good evening. It's good to be with you all tonight again. This is kind of an annual thing we do each year. Okay. See, what moves it forward? Okay, let's go to the first page. Okay, the debt capsule report is something that we prepare for you all each year. This is the amount of debt that the school district is obligated to repay. As you can see, you have basically currently, before tonight, you have three bond issues that are outstanding. The first one is a 2010 Qualified School Construction Bond. That was issued in the amount of $17 million. That was part of the 2009 stimulus package from the federal government as they were coming out of the banking problems around the country. And so the federal government agreed to pay the interest on school construction bonds. The school district was limited to 17 million. You issued the full amount that was available. And so the federal government has been paying the interest on those bonds, which means you have an effective rate of less than about 0.01%. That's down to $2,115,000, or $2,150,000. That'll be paid off in March of 2025. So this time next year, that should be paid in full. The only other two bonds outstanding are what's left from the referendum that was approved, the last referendum. I can't remember the exact year, but I think we, the voters adopted the referendum in maybe 2016. We issued bond anticipation notes or construction loans as the various projects were being completed. And then we termed out the loans once those construction processes were completed. And as you can see, you're at a very low interest rate, about 2.7% and 2.5% on those. So rates that are unheard of today, we couldn't get anywhere close to this type of rate today. So you all have locked in all of that long-term debt. From a standpoint of projections going forward, this year, we're estimating that the annual capital bond, which funds all the capital construction, capital maintenance, technology, anything that has a useful life of over 12 months. So you can't use it for teacher salaries, can't use it for paying for interventionists, all the things that are hitting your operational budget. But because of issuing an annual bond, that, at least you don't have to pay for the technology needs and some of the ongoing maintenance needs out of your operational village. So this year, we're estimating that about 7.5 million. When I ran these numbers a month ago, a month and a half ago, it was about 7.2. As we continue to get information in from Lisa and her staff, it looks like we're going to be able to issue 7.5 this year, which is the amount of your general obligation bond resolution that Ms. Heiser will present to you. So the good news is, from a debt side, you all are getting in really, really good condition. And so you're able to use these dollars. This loan, the 2024, will be issued in September, early September, and paid off in March. So you're only going to be paying interest on it for about six months. We will take that through the SKGO program, which is a statewide pooling program that school districts participate in and which spreads your issuance cost against all of those. So you end up with a much lower cost of issuance and you end up going to the capital markets without having to do an official rating and statements and so on. So it's pretty solid. As you can see, the graph, which is the next page, is an outline of what your debt service requirements have been each year. You have been at 28.5 mils of debt service for a long time, maybe back as many as eight to 10 years without any tax increase. We always operate as we size these annual bonds that there will be no tax increase going forward. So these bonds, you can issue the 7.5 million without any tax increase. The next page is the, basically the debt structure report, which is the numbers behind the graph. And as you can see, going forward, next year, with very modest growth, we think that your amount of bond will probably be 8.5 million. Part of this is because you're paying off that last Qualified School Construction Bond payment. And as you move forward, you're going to have more and more money available for your annual bonds that we would issue each year. And again, we issue those in September and pay them off in March. The money's go into your project fund and then the board approves which projects are funded out of that capital projects fund. The next page is your village cash flow levy report. This is how we come up with these numbers to size that you're not going to have a tax increase by issuing this amount of money. And as you can see, you all have had, on average, 2.5% to 3% growth. We use a 1% growth factor going forward for future growth. So we're on a conservative S. estimate each year, so we've got nice positive numbers, and it's certainly the side of the issue that we want to be on. So again, we're very conservative in our estimates, and so we feel that we can continue this funding program for an extended period of time without any kind of tax increase to the voters. The last page is the Constitutional Debt Limit Report. And the school district has two ways to borrow money for capital purposes. One is to go to a voter referendum listing the projects you all want to fund and getting the voters to give you approval to borrow X dollars for those projects. We would then structure those out over a 20, 25-year payment structure. The other way that you can borrow money is through issuing 8% debt, and that means 8% of your assessed value. The good news is that when your qualified construction bonds are paid off and you're, and we pay off this one, you'll have 100% of your debt capacities, which is about $53 million available to the board, that if you had a major catastrophe or a significant problem, you could issue up to 50-plus million dollars just on the board's action and then structure the repayment to where the 28 mils would pay it off. The good thing is, we're in a hurricane zone here in Georgetown County and on the coast, so we always try to maintain a good, strong balance of that 8% debt limit, which is a pattern that you all have had for at least 20 years that I've been doing your bonds. And so you've gotten a very, very strong financial statement from a standpoint of debt management here in the school district, and you all have tremendous flexibility going forward to issue additional bonds if necessary. But again, we think that you're on a good, solid standard pattern, no tax increases pledged or expected in the future, and a continual of 8, 8 and 1/2, 9 million dollars over the next several years, each year for capital, which helps pay for the technology and all the other issues that you have to pay for. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them, or we'll get to Franny, and then you can answer questions from the three of us.
Good evening. Always great to be with y'all. Everybody seems to always be more interested in Bob's information because he's got the numbers and he talks about millage. I have the drier part of the presentation, which is the resolution. This document is the same that y'all have seen year after year. It does authorize the issuance of the not to exceed 7 and 1/2 million dollars from your general obligation, 8% debt limit. As Bob has explained, you'll be part of SCAGO program. You'll have the, the transaction will close in September, you'll pay the debt off in March, and then we'll be back presumably next, next year for the same process. Be glad to answer any questions.
So the administration recommends that the board approve a resolution authorizing not exceeding 7.5 million in general obligation bond through the fall of 2024 SCA GO program, the proceeds of which will be used for the purpose of funding annual maintenance and capital projects and paying cost of insuance of the bonds as presented. That's a lot. It's been moved. It's been a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we have a personnel list. The administration recommends approval of the personnel list as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The next is the, it seems like a long time ago when we had our very last meeting. I presented a deed from the Georgetown County Farmers Bureau between the county school district and Georgetown County, and the recommendation of modifying the deed. It's a, it's a house that was sold to Farmers Bureau in 1989, and there was a line in the deed that stated, tell me, what did it state?
Yes, sir. It's this, it says in the event where the bureau determines to sell, convey, or lease, or otherwise dispose of the property, the board shall have the right of purchase keys where we purchase the property from the bureau for a sum of $5.
Yeah. And they, and the Farmers Bureau wanted it removed because they want to renovate the house, put some money in fixing it up. So the administration recommends approval of the deed modification between Georgetown County School District and Georgetown County Farm Bureau as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The administration recommends first reading approval of combining policies IFD and IFE with policy IGA, Basic Instructional Program, as presented. Is there a motion to move it forward? Okay, it's moved and second. Also remembering, at our last full board meeting, we went through this, these policies. There's no discussion, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The next is, the administration recommends first reading approval of striking through all outdated language and updating to current law as presented. It's been moved. It's been second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Policy IGA, the administration recommends first reading approval of striking through the extended year and updated the language to meet the needs of identified students.
So moved.
It's been moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. The next is a memorandum agreement with, with the school district and the youth empowerment program. The administration recommends approval of the MOA between Georgetown County School District and Helping Hands Youth Empowerment Program as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved and it's been second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Extension lease to the Waukesha Regional Council of Government. The administration recommends approval of the lease extension between Georgetown County School District and Waukesha Regional Council of Governments as presented.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and it's been second. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. The motion is carried. Extension of lease to Ms. Ruby's kids. The administration recommends approval of the lease extension between Georgetown County School District and Ms. Ruby's kids as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say no. Next is a letter of support for the solar energy project. You want to just say something about that since it has not come up for discussion? This came up really rather quickly.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman Gaskins, members of the board, Dr. Gauss, this was a request through Silicon Ranch. They own property off of Saint Stellite Road, and for, for the construction of a utility-scale solar energy project, they need to convey 2.6 acres of their property to Santee Cooper for the construction of the substation to make the solar energy work. And as part of their requirement under state law, again, as we've done before with some property transfers, they have to have the approval of the local school district board before they can go forward with the, with the land transfer. They also have to have the approval of the county council, and county council has already given their approval of this project. We received very late notice about this, and so that's why we put it on rather quickly. We, they actually needed it a couple of weeks ago when our, our meeting was canceled, and we've, we've kind of asked them for an extension, but they are asking just for the board's support to receive, to transfer that property.
The administration recommends approval of the letter of support for solar energy project by Silicon Ranch as presented. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Out of district transfer request, the administration recommends approval of Georgetown County residents' requests for release from Georgetown County School District for the 2024-2025 school year.
So moved.
It's moved and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. And finally, board in comments or request. Don't be bashful.
I got something to say. This is a subject that's very tender to a lot of parents and students, but I know in years past with you board members that have been here, it sort of seemed like, and correct me if I wronged, that there was more awareness of bullying in our school system. And I don't think we need to be naive to believe that we don't have bullying in our schools. We do. I think every school has a certain percentage of bullying. I would like to see us this year with our new superintendent jump back on bullying. I think some of the programs and awareness programs to kids and parents have kind of failed by the wayside. I've already received since the beginning of year, being I'm an at-large candidate, at least six phone calls of parents where kids have been bullied around our school district. So obviously, it is in our school district. I think we need to jump back on the bandwagon and look at it closely again, and let's start an awareness program with parents, teachers, principals, students, and just, let's just bring it back to the forefront.
Think we can get an update on that from our safety department at some point?
Yeah, we can request that at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Yep. To moving on, Dr. Gauss.
So good evening to everyone again. We thank you, board members, for, for your energy and effort today. You know, we do congratulate the members of the Carver's Bay Early College and Career High School FFA. We were fortunate to be with them last year as they had their end-of-year celebration, and that group really sets a standard that is very high, so we commend them as well as their leader. Since our last meeting, we also, our world concluded the 2024 Olympics. We've been celebrating and we continue to celebrate our very own Melissa Jefferson. We recognize her as well as her teammates on representing Team USA proudly. We share her congratulations as she won bronze in the 100-meter race as well as gold in the 4x100 relay race. We look forward to continuing to move and celebrate with the Melissa, and details are forthcoming, but at this time, I would share that just as a place marker, if you want to hold October 12th, I was told that is a tentative date for celebrations in our county. Continuing in recognition on behalf of our team, we thank all of our teachers, our instructional staff members, our administration for their dedication, as well as their hard work. That was evidenced in the assessment results that Dr. Barano shared. While much of the magic does happen in the classrooms, we are aware that the support staff members are equally as important because they help set the tone and help set the atmosphere for effective teaching and learning to occur. So we do thank the complete team for everything that they've done, and we look forward to sharing with you more updates as well as our response to the data and how we can improve, again, moving and celebrating. We also want to thank everyone for their efforts and support to ensure that we open schools safely. It seems like a long time ago, but we just opened school a few days ago, and so we want to thank our custodial teams as well as our faculty and our facilities teams for ensuring that our schools are bright, shiny, and safe each day, even after a tropical storm. They ensured that we were ready to reopen. A special salute to our bus drivers who navigated safely during very challenging times. So we definitely support and salute our transportation department. And lastly, while we do recognize and celebrate the accomplishments in our schools and our students, you know, I share that our hearts are very heavy, so it's hard to have recognitions when we know that we are navigating through some trying times in our district. Again, Friday, we tragically lost two students, Haley Patterson, Andrews High School, and Kissa Wilson, eighth grader at Rosemary Middle. But I do share that even in the midst of difficult times, the strength of our Georgetown County School District family shines through. Thank you to members of our crisis care team who continue to support the Andrews community and beyond. We uplift those families as well as our school families and our thoughts. Along with continued uplift, we know that we just tragically lost someone as well, Tyrese Haynes and the Waukesha family, so that is not unnoted, and we do salute those who are continuing to provide resources and support to our entire school family. So please know that we are here for one another, and we will continue to support as one family as we go through these trying times. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Gauss. I appreciate all the work that you've done getting our schools open and our kids safely to school. Thank you so much. Now we have an executive session for the first purpose of discussion of superintendent interviews and discussion of superintendent candidate finalists. Is there a motion that we go into executive session? It's been moved and second. All in favor, please say aye. We are now in executive. Okay, is there a motion that would come out of the executive session? All in favor, please say aye. We are officially out of the executive session. Do you have a motion for us, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Georgetown County School Board name the following four candidates as finalists for the position of superintendent for the Georgetown County School District. The candidates for finalists are being announced in alphabetical order. Dr. Bethany A. Gauss, Mr. Gregory B. Hall, Dr. Glenda F. Sheffield, and Dr. William T. Wright.
It's been moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. The motion is carried. Just an update, we all know, Dr. Gauss, Mr. Gregory Hall is serving as Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education in Florence One Schools in Florence. Dr. Glenda Sheffield is currently serves as Chief Academic Officer for the School District of Palm Beach County in Florida, and Dr. William Wright currently serves as Superintendent of Sumter School District in Sumter, South Carolina. And for those who are watching at home, you will see a press release, announcements, pictures on Facebook shortly. And update on our search, we will be doing the finalist interviews on September the 16th through the 17th. Hopefully, next week, we'll release a schedule for those two days. We'll get that out to you, and it looks like everything else is on schedule. Thank you for a good meeting. Is there a motion that we adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And close this.